All right, I call the October 4th Planning Board meeting to order at 6 o'clock. My name is Stephanie Slisch. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I have Jimmy Tarr that's here virtually as our alternate Chair. Jimmy, could you state your name for the record now you're here virtually?
Jimmy Tarr, here in Nashville, Tennessee.
Oh, very nice. I'm glad we were able to have the virtual option to accommodate you. Thank you. To my right, I have Lee Bell, and to my left, I have John Jeffress. And I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge our fifth seat tonight. Our fifth member of the Planning Board unfortunately passed away. I'd like to take a moment of silence just to, you know, to thank Mike Pachek, who was in the seat. Thank you, yeah. He's had great -- he was a longtime volunteer of Boards of Committees across the town, and his service will definitely be missed.
Thank you so much for his service.
Yeah. And condolences to his family as well. If anyone else would like to speak on that, otherwise, we can move on to the public forum. All right. I'd like to move to open public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to bring anything to the Board that they would like to speak on that's not on the agenda. Considering that there doesn't appear to be anyone here virtually or in person at this meeting tonight, we will close public forum and move on to our other agenda items for tonight. So the first one, we have a couple items to formally discuss. I'm going to pass the mic over to Janelle to speak about two different things we're working on to update for town meeting.
Yes, and I apologize, my computer is having issues.
That's okay.
It's not starting. Well, first, I want to say, for design guidelines, it sounded like not making many changes to it, unless did either of you have any glaring -- or Jimmy too, sorry.
Yeah, any chance to review and give feedback based on our conversation at the last meeting?
Yeah, because I feel like it's a pretty comprehensive list.
And what I said to Janelle, and I like started to go through it, and I was like, I could spend a lot of time reconfiguring all of this and maybe eliminating a few bullet points out of this very long thing. But it's like all suggestions. Yeah. And so if the developer or whoever's looking at this and incorporates like the spirit of some of these, or like takes these as inspiration and runs with it, like, that's fine with me. Unless we all feel strongly, otherwise.
I don't disagree with you. It seems that it's -- and I will admit that I have not gone through it as comprehensively as I should have, but it seems to me that as it sits, it seems to be a way to mold movement towards the aesthetics and how things should be. And that's kind of the word that's in it, should or may.
Yes, and--
So it leaves things open, which kind of drives me crazy most of the time, but this is one of those things where if it kind of points you in the right direction without limiting business, which I think was part of the problem. I think the Select Board had trouble with driving business away because it was too bullet pointed.
Restrictive, maybe?
Yes.
Prescriptive. And I think at the last meeting, we mentioned that we want to make it as easy to read as possible for people to go through. My thought is that I don't think that developers are going to spend the time like combing through our design guidelines and trying to come up with something that they think will be the best fit in Hatfield. I mean, like, obviously, that would be the dream, is if we only have developers who want to build something that fits in with the character of the town. But I think this, having this in place, gives us the opportunity to say, oh, like, if you reference this specific section, then make some changes, which is what we have not been able to do--
It gives us something to lean on that's not just a personal opinion.
Yeah. And say, like, look at the reference photos in this part of the design guidelines and see if you can make some changes that would make this a better fit in town. So that's how I see its purpose.
Yeah, and I feel like we would need to explain that. You know, maybe that explanation wasn't the way it was approached back when they tried to pass this before, if that was the case of them.
That was what I'd heard, looking into it.
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe developing more of like an introduction to it in that way.
Yes.
But it's--
Definition of the word guidelines.
Yeah.
Like, bold print.
What do guidelines mean to--
This is not restricting your dream of making a skyscraper.
Yeah, well--
These are guidelines when you decide to make it.
And it's only, it's like 20 pages, right? So I don't feel like it's that.
I mean, they can take as little or as much as they want from it.
Yeah.
Which is really -- and it's something we can point to.
Mm-hmm. To just give us an extra.
And I guess that would be then, like, for those who haven't had the time to take a look at it, is there any bullet points that you think are just not right for Hatfield? But otherwise, I feel like they all make sense to me. Like, they're trying to get people to put parking on the side or rear instead of--
You put it in the back, yeah.
And like, things like that, that they're trying to--
Minimize your curb cuts, like, proper stuff.
Right, like asking national chains to fit into the character of the neighborhood instead of having their bright whatever colors that they are, like, that kind of thing. I mean, those are just very, a few things picked, plucked from this very long list, but the work was already done for us to pass this, and it's just been kind of sitting in a virtual shelf, so.
Yeah. It's time. It's time for design guidelines.
Jimmy, any thoughts on your end?
Yeah, I think that a lot of this stuff was impertinent to our town. And I think that, on the whole, I think that people generally are going to abide by common sense rules. And so my thoughts is should be a guideline and not a fixed rule.
Yeah, I agree with him.
Yep. Great. With that--
Cool.
Any other comments on this? I feel like if you, any, all of you who have not taken a look at it--
Yeah, no, I feel that if, given the opportunity to revisit this, that we maybe, maybe we could, like I said, I'm woefully unprepared for this, so.
Well, I think, so, that's okay. And I think, because even before, in 2014, when it was initially brought to the Planning Board, I think there was a lot of work that went into it, so it is comprehensive. I think what would be nice for us to do is if we, I have to talk to Marlene about this, but taking out an ad and maybe advertising that we're talking about, design guidelines and the open space development at our, maybe our next public, our next meeting.
Because we'd have to do that anyway in order to get it on the town warrant, I believe. Right, Ashton?
Yes.
We have to have a public, we have to announce it and post an ad--
I mean, speaking of open space, I mean, is there any, has there been any concern, you know, cross-committee with this kind of thing, you know?
Related to this?
Yeah.
Open space development is residential, right? Yes, so this is more for, this is almost 100% for commercial or mixed use, which would be-- I guess there could be a mixed-use open space development, probably, but--
Okay.
We could also still reference it, though. Like, we can say, like, if you want to put your open space, put your residential open space development, like, and you want, we want you to try and make it the character of the town, like it says in the design guidelines, X, Y, Z on--
The Historical Commission might want to review them and look at them. I don't know. I can send things over to them.
You know, there just may be some good opinions coming from some of the other--
Yeah, and I would also get some buy-in from other committees who could then like say, we also approve these at town meeting or something.
Mm-hmm.
All right, that would be a good next step between now and the next meeting is to--
Internal review.
Yeah. At least for the design guidelines. And then, I don't, I feel like money-wise, it makes sense to do the hearings at the same time.
Yes.
But I don't know if we would be ready, like, we would be ready to do this probably at our next meeting, like, the design guidelines. But I don't know if we'd be able to be ready for number two on our agenda, a formal discussion of our open space development by law review.
I'm feeling pretty good about open space bylaws. I have six questions--
Oh, great.
That I want to--
Are we done with the guidelines, though?
I think so, yeah. Yes.
So we're going to--
General approval.
Send to, for internal review. And then, we're going to work on a public hearing for it, related to get public input on these guidelines before, which couldn't, could result in a few changes or tweaks, potentially. Okay.
Cool.
Do we should probably vote on that?
Or--
I don't think we need to vote on it, because we're just moving it to the next stage.
We're just having a discussion.
Okay.
Can I talk about open space?
Yes.
Okay. Open space bylaws review. So I have not talked, I haven't sent anything to Town Council yet for this because I wanted to have a comprehensive list of questions for when I eventually send them something. So--
Is this currently in our, the pack, thing you put in our packet is from our current bylaws, correct? Or is this your--
Oh, yeah, that's current.
These are what the current bylaws are.
Okay.
So, first big change is changing open space development allowed by right to the de facto kind of subdivision development in Hatfield. I almost said Hadley. You get fired.
Get in trouble.
What's the difference between making it de facto and keeping it by right?
So by right is--
Educating the public.
Yes, so by right just means that it would be, you would go to the Planning Board for permission to do your open space development. Well, you still have to get permission. By making it de facto is, if you are making a subdivision with more than three lots, then we are, well, that's another question, requiring it to be an open space development instead of regular--
Subdivision?
Subdivision. So one of my questions is, do we want to allow for a waiver from open space development? I personally--
So you're saying, so if someone comes in, they have a parcel, and they want to develop more than three units, we're saying they have to do an open space development, and it's allowed, and they, whatever. They would need a waiver to do a traditional subdivision, which would be--
Yes.
A cul-de-sac with 200 feet of frontage and whatever size lots.
Yes, so there's steps here. Right now, it's, if you want to do an open space development, you would get permission to do an open space development. The proposed changes are making it de facto, so just that any subdivision with more than three lots is going to be an open space subdivision, which has all of these rules and regulations.
And they wouldn't have to jump through all these hoops of that are current, not necessarily hoops. So if you want to do a traditional subdivision, you just come to us, and we kind of have to say yes. There's nothing really we can do about it. And that's kind of what we would make the open space development bylaw be?
Yeah, this is now just making more rules for what your subdivision would have to include because it would be an open space subdivision. So we could provide--
Is that legal, first of all?
So that--
Because I feel like the state makes the subdivision bylaws. The standard subdivision bylaw is like by right, like you have to allow, or you have to allow that.
So that's one of my questions for Tom, when I eventually reach out to him. Because essentially, what we're doing is just making the--
Preferred?
We're making, like, frontage maximums.
With what?
With open space development. Because instead of having to have 200 feet of frontage, it's like, you, where's mine?
Looks like in some places, you're going down to 60 feet.
Yeah.
With our current bylaw, yeah.
Or excuse me, 80 feet.
Yeah.
Yep, and actually, one of the comments from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission was to remove frontage requirements--
Altogether.
Altogether, and make it so it was case by case.
But it would still have to maintain the same, like, the slot size needed for like a septic, for example, and have the same setbacks of like 35 feet, I think it is, from the road and 15 side yard, 15 foot side yards.
Yep, and there's still, it's, with that, it's not like you can suddenly build an apartment complex there. There's still lots of rules.
So is there a backup if, idea if this is not allowed legally?
The backup idea, I think, would be also making changes to our regular subdivision.
So I'm on, not to, so I'm on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, the land use chapter, and one of their recommendations to us is to update our regular subdivision bylaws and make those more restrictive and add more, basically, because I don't, because I don't think we can actually make these de facto.
Okay.
I think we have to keep them, keep the subdivision one de facto, but we can add more things on our subdivision bylaw to make it, to just basically encourage people to make this easier.
You need the carrot and the stick. If you're not going to make this the de facto way to go through.
Right, and so like what, like, other communities have done is like make their, if you're going to do a standard subdivision, you need to have them all LEED certified.
Yeah.
Or like something like that, that would be like, in some ways, cost prohibitive to make people want to do the open space development bylaw. That's just an example of what you could put in the, or they'd have to put X number, like, make the roads narrower, which are, which is actually be, make cost them less. It might be more of an encouragement, but, you know, things like that, like--
Yeah.
They have sidewalks, they have to have, you can do all these things. You can add to your, to your regular traditional subdivision bylaw to discourage the standard subdivision. And to be clear for the public and like, just to name it, like, it's not that we want to discourage more home building. We, at least me personally, would like to see more condensed home building. And then with open space development bylaw, you get to preserve land at the same time.
Yeah.
So you're creating more affordable housing by de facto putting them on smaller lots, really.
And with open space development, the, depending on how much land you do preserve, you can get a density bonus, so that's the carrot here.
Some of the other questions, or do they have two? So with that, Janelle, I, I don't know about the other members of the Board because this is like first time maybe of them thinking about this, because I have the privilege of having, being a part of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and that only coming up at our last meeting that I had. So it's not like I've been thinking about this for that long. But I feel like if we're going to pass an updated open space development bylaw, and it can't be de facto, we would, I think, we would need to do updates to this traditional subdivision bylaws at the same time for the argument to make sense at town meeting.
And is that something that we want to do before the new con-plan comes out? Like, is that something that--
I mean, it's things that have been on, well, besides updating the subdivision bylaws, like, this has been on our radar for a long time.
Okay.
I think from like, a political argument to vote at town meeting, I think having both at the same time, instead of trying to pass this now and then like try to pass something a year later, it might be difficult for people, for the public to make the connection as to why. We would be updating them separately. I don't know. Do you have thoughts on, are you following what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, well, anything that goes to town meeting is, can get funny.
I know. It can get funny.
And the supposition hinges on if, if we can't override state law. You're thinking that we can't make it de facto. We need to find that out from town.
Right, I think that's the first question we need to find out, is if we can make it de facto? Because that might negate like--
I don't see, I don't understand why. It's like all, all towns subset the general laws, right? They always sort of crimp around and bend them.
Right, the subdivision like bylaws, like a state law or whatever. Like, we are control of all of our own bylaws, but for whatever reason, subdivision is like a thing that the state, and we, when we adopted it, we didn't put any sort of our own, like, restrictions or anything on it, so it's a very basic subdivision bylaw.
So hypothetically, though, if--
And when I say restrictions, I don't mean them as restrictions because in some cases, it actually would make a better, more useful place, subdivision.
Um, okay. Without knowing yet if we can actually do it, if we can't, and open space development can't be de facto, it has to be by right, we would support changing the regular regulations for lot sizes, frontage requirements at this upcoming--
No, that's not what I'm saying.
No, okay. You are saying wait until the next year?
No.
Try to do them both at once.
I'm saying, I'm not saying anything about lot sizes and frontage requirements. I'm saying updating the standard subdivision bylaw--
Okay.
With some extra things in it to make it less enticing than an open space development bylaw. For example, they could still do the same lot size and frontage size that we currently have now, but like, maybe we have, they have to have, put in sidewalks, which is more infrastructure that they would have to put in.
Okay.
They would need to, you know, this is an extreme thing, but they need to be LEED certified, or they need to have solar panels.
Yeah, other stick type thing.
They would need to have solar panels, or like, create their own energy, or I don't know. Like, there's things that other, other towns have done--
Okay.
So if someone wants to put a traditional subdivision in, that has to meet extra criteria beyond just the bare minimum, which we have now.
Or at least, yeah, making it--
Yeah, I'm understanding you now.
Okay.
Try to encourage this. If we can't make this the default, try to push both changes in at once.
And which is why I feel like doing them at the same time, and we say like, because we want this, we think the town people would want this, based on our Comprehensive Plan Committee conversations to town--
It's a bigger argument. It's a bigger argument than just this.
Okay. So understand that, that you want to put both of, if it can't be changed, put both of them in at the same--
I mean, I would like to hear from the other committee members. That's just my thought on that, but I don't want to--
I think it's a good idea, but it, again, it all hinges on if we can't do--
Yes, okay.
By right to de facto.
I don't personally think there's anything wrong with making our standard subdivision requirements a little more restrictive.
Yeah.
Okay. Especially if we're making this open space development bylaw less restrictive. I don't want to be seen like we're making everything for development to be restrictive. That's not what we're doing. It's just to try to incentivize one over the other.
And so if we do it that way, then would you think that you want to include language to allow for a waiver from this? That's, that's one of the questions, or one of the comments we received from the PVPC is whether or not we want to include language to have a waiver from open space development.
Somebody wants to do a standard, somebody wants to do some kind of standard.
Yeah.
Like they're always doing.
But if we, because right now, they're so different, but if we make the regulations stricter for regular subdivision, then maybe we could include the option for a waiver.
And the waiver would mean they just have to come to us, and we would have to grant them a waiver, and we don't have to grant them a waiver? Interesting. I feel like that might be a good question for the public to weigh in on if we did a public hearing. Because I have, I would need to know more pros and cons about, about that from like, a developer side and like process side. Is that going to bog down and have something--
Yeah, that's, that's something I would have to develop an opinion on after talking to people, for sure.
But a good question still to ask Town Council if we would, can do that. Or is that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission saying that we would do that? Anyway, if we, if you need to do any sort of figuring out any questions around that legally--
Asked, yeah.
If you need to.
One of the other questions that we have in here is whether or not to make it so that all houses from, are not visible from street view, essentially. So if you're putting in open space development, which I don't think this is in the regular ones yet, or the ones that are in our current bylaws.
So yeah, what we're seeing now is what we currently have, and Janelle is looking at like the draft that we almost passed at town meeting in 2019?
Is it? It would be 6.28 Section D if it is--
I don't think, oh, in our current bylaws?
Yeah.
6.28 D about septic?
No, this is about setbacks, so maybe it's not.
No, I don't think we have that.
Yeah, 6.28 for us is utility requirement sewage disposal.
So they said, "To the extent feasible, all buildings shall be located out of view from any road, and protected open space shall be located adjacent to public ways. Any building lot which fronts on an existing public road shall have frontage normally required within the zoning district."
So, wait, okay. So it's saying that it wants the open space to be, like, let's say it's off of a main road. It wants this open space to about the, to be on the main road?
Yeah, well, it says, yeah, adjacent to public ways.
And then any--
Is it wherever feasible?
No, but we could add that, some--
I don't, I'm trying to think of a couple of, I don't know why that's important. Can someone explain? Is it so that it stays visible on, like, if you're driving down the main road, you want to be able to see the open space?
It also, another reason to talk about it, I think, is because that would mandate frontage. That has frontage, that implies frontage requirements, whereas we're--
What is, what do you mean by that?
So it says, locate, da-da-da-da-da, shall have the frontage normally required within the zoning district.
Oh, so these are two separate things. One, I'm at, one part of what you're reading is saying the open space should be--
Adjacent.
Adjacent to, or like, to a main road. And then the other thing is if one of the houses on this develop, in this open space development bylaw, is their frontage is on the main road, they need to have the 200 feet of frontage, basically?
Yes, which--
I would like to argue, push back on that. I don't think that would be necessary, considering most houses in Hatfield, or at least in downtown Hatfield, do not meet the current frontage requirements.
Okay. Bill, when I spoke to Bill, he actually, they, he referred to it as like a cap house.
Are you talking about Bob Wagner?
Yes. Bob. Referring to it as a cap house, and that, that would be a good effort to make to, if someone is worried about open space development bylaws destroying the character of the neighborhood, by having that and requiring one, like, the house on the main road to have regular frontage, or whatever its existing frontage was--
Is right now, it's 200.
Then behind it can be, not a free-for-all, but it can be 80 or somewhere around there, as long as that is out of view from the main road.
Well, it's cap house.
Cap house is, is like that existing house that's already on the main street.
Oh, like capstone, the visible--
Yeah.
Like a, like a cap on the end of an aisle.
Right, an end cap.
The end cap house, yeah.
I see pros and cons to that also.
Okay.
Personally.
Yeah, I don't know what to think.
Because, so that's all, the thing is like, if they wanted to do that, we could, sure, but like, I don't want to require someone to do that because maybe it actually would look better and fit in more of the character of the neighborhood not to have that. But by requiring it seems--
I think they're just talking about the common open space, right?
No, I'm talking about-- These are two separate things.
Yeah, the frontage.
One of them is, basically, it's like what, if there's going to be a house that uses, that's going to be like an end house, it has to have 200 feet of frontage. And then it's separately, if there's open space, well, the open space that comes with the open space development bylaw has to be on that main road, or piece of it has to touch the main road.
Yeah, I don't like the frontage.
I also, yeah, I--
I feel like I shouldn't require it, but like, maybe like--
It hampers it.
It could. I feel like it's restrictive.
That's why they put the, put the open space on the road, too, can hamper it, right? Again, if, I'd see it as, if it's feasible, right? We want this.
If it's feasible, yeah.
We want this, but we don't want to stop the project. If you're going to preserve some land, and it's got to be behind development, then we'd rather have the land preserved than--
But also--
The aesthetic value of the land.
Maybe it's something like at the request that we could ask someone, ask them to make that house like a cap house? I don't know.
It seems to me, it's, it seems to me it's all situational.
I agree. So that's why I have, I'm nervous to like require it, or is that what the wording says?
To, uh, it actually starts off, so, "To the extent feasible, all buildings--
If I feel--
I don't see why open space should have to be prioritized to be adjacent to--
I think it's for like a Vista, like you're driving--
Common open space, not your open--
Yeah, public open space.
Common open space, where you want to see it. You can't ring it off with houses and just say--
And then have a giant building in the backyard.
Somewhere, yeah.
Right.
A common open space. Preserve space, which is one of the goals.
I agree with the open space piece, but again, like, I don't know about that cap house.
Yeah, the frontage thing, yeah, we got to get into that. I think there should be some--
If there's an opportunity to, take less is more.
Yeah, we're trying to encourage open space, Bill.
I need to think, like, because I can't see an instance where, why it would be in there. Yes, I understand that, but I also feel like it could make it not be a part of the neighborhood.
Especially if we have design guidelines.
Well, if there was, if there was an instance where you could put all of the houses Well, if there was, if there was an instance where you could put all of the houses away from the road where no one's going to see them, then why would you need to jam a cap house?
Right, if you made all the open space.
I think the idea is to have like one big house that hides.
We don't need more of those. I mean, like, not that, the, another part of the purpose of having the open space development by law is to encourage how homes that'll be more affordable.
Hmm.
Because the lots are smaller.
Hmm.
And obviously like we have some beautiful, wonderful big homes. However, we need to be encouraging the other way. Yes, Jimmy?
It seems to me that if um, this open space development allows um, smaller lot, that might help promote some of our affordable housing that we have none of in this town.
Right, we have 3% of, and if there's a state law that the state could come, if we don't have 10% affordable housing, and affordable means like within a certain median income, not like section eight housing or however you wanted to find that.
Affordable or moderate, right?
Right, so it's, I'm pretty sure, yeah. Because we don't have 10% threshold. I could be wrong, that could be section eight, like, anyway, we don't have, any, regardless, we're at 3%, we need to be at 10%. Because we're not at 10%, if some developer wanted to come in and put in a boatload of affordable housing, they wouldn't be able to come to us. The state would come in and be like, you guys aren't doing your job, you're not hitting the 10%. We can, we're, we're going, like, the developer can do this and it doesn't matter what you say.
Yeah, is it 1040 or something like that?
Yeah, chapter.
Yeah.
Chapter 40B or something like that.
Had to be adopted.
I have a package on that that I'm reading.
Yeah, well, it has to be adopted by the town. That's what I thought, that we haven't adopted it, but other towns have, and then other towns did and then overturned it because they didn't like.
Regardless, we need to be doing better.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, I mean, this, you know, having, having unaffordable housing in this town, it has been affecting not to, you know, I mean, having high property values in this town is great, but when our schools are dying because they're, because young families can't get into town, it's a problem.
Hmm. And then, you know, on the other side, flip side too, we're getting to be an older uh, community in town. So yes, there's not young people coming in, but the older people who are trying to stay in their homes, that may have been their family homes forever, taxes and, or might become unaffordable to them if they're in some larger homes and they want to stay in their homes too. So it's, you know, we need to rely on diversifying our housing and I'm, if we can really like champion the open space development by law, update it, I feel like that would be a good win-win for everyone.
Um.
Other questions? Yes, Janelle?
So another, another question or suggestion from the PPPC was to make it a requirement that open space subdivision, open space subdivisions had to add connections to town amenities. So.
What is that?
Sewer water hookups.
But they have to?
Yeah. So I'm wondering if we're now having the discussion about making regs for regular subdivisions stricter. If we just add that there. That could be very costly in some areas and possibly impossible though. So I don't.
So we would, yeah, that's a good point. Um, and what is, what is the record, what does it say in your draft thing there that, can you read that?
Um, they just.
Or they just made a point saying.
They just made a comment, yeah. Um, like consider adding a, a requirement to make connections to town amenities. Which I don't know where it is.
Okay.
In this, but it was, it was very simple.
And I'm not sure.
I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's totally feasible in some of the areas where there's potential development. Not so much for the water, but for the sewer.
Well, I think it's like when possible, right? So we're not going to ask someone to extend the sewer line a ton of, like, oh, there's no sewer line, they can't do it. It's like, oh, there's a water line there, they have to connect to a water line, they have to pay for the infrastructure for the water line, they can't put in wells.
Perhaps a question for town council is like uh, threshold for if it exceeds a certain amount, it's not feasible, but if it's under it.
Right, because like if you put, if you're putting houses more densely in there and you're saying, oh, they need a, they're all going to have wells.
Or making it district dependent.
Septics.
They all want to have septic, right.
Yeah, so, okay.
Any strong, any thoughts on that initially? I'm want to see, Janelle, I want to see like, I know you're looking at like the red line copy, what we were going to send to town meeting last time and if it included, included that or not.
Um, it didn't, it did not include it. It was in green as a comment. So he, and it, I'm really like, I don't know where. I was just looking at it before this meeting. It should be your laws.
I'm. My initial thought again goes back to kind of what you were saying. If we're trying to incentivize this type of development, maybe we don't put it there, but we could always put it in our subdivision bylaws. If we're gonna, if we have, going to have to update those.
Okay. I agree.
Yeah, a lot of.
Oh, additional requirements. So this is, yeah. Suggested to add connections to town amenities and open space.
What does it mean by connections to open space?
Um, so like making it public access to the open space, yeah, which.
We couldn't do. I think that was the reason why town council pulled it, correct?
Uh, yeah, that's what Bob had said. Um, but town amenities that we.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that was the reason why town council pulled it is because we were, we actually put that comment in there saying that the common space, the public would have access to.
Yeah, it's private property.
It could be private property. One of the options of what to do with that land is you could make it, sell it to another farmer, for example, to keep it farmland, sell it to somebody else to keep it open space, or you could make it a communal open space, space that the public can have access to. But by requiring that, that's what pulled it last time.
Yeah, so we could.
So we don't want to do that.
We could have language that says that we have, um, we encourage that and that we encourage.
I don't even know if I would want to say that though, because like what if someone wants to, like I said, like, I'm thinking a farmer, a farm, farmer has a really tough year, needs to develop something, but doesn't want to see the farmland developed. It doesn't open space development by law, but wants to stay farming the other piece. So they'd sell the piece back to themselves so they can keep farming or to another farmer to keep farming or.
Like especially for agricultural, like prime agricultural lands.
I would want to see it then become a meadow and then not be active productive soil. And it takes, you know, I appreciate, a lot of times if a condo, they, one of the other options is making it like a condo, a condo association and they all have to vote and decide what to do on the land and then like nothing happens with the land.
Yeah.
Because nobody can agree on what to do with it. So I.
Something for like encouraging, if it's not agricultural land.
Yeah, it could be hiking land or something too.
Or just like starting to add slash build a, well, we have a trail network, but something like contributing to trail networks, um, which I guess that was the reason why it got pulled though, so I don't think we can.
I think less is more.
Let, yeah.
Going back with some of this.
Wherever feasible, you know.
Yeah.
Open space should be on the roadside. Wherever feasible, open space should be contiguous with town.
Yeah, kind of more of a.
Yep.
More guidelines than.
But I'm fascinated by the concept of, uh, I'm going to make a development like this. I'm going to get my houses in tight as the open space law and then sell off the open space? Like that's, I don't get that. I figure this would be like a plan to make deed restrictions. This has to be.
You can sell, it does. So they can sell off the open space, but it's going to be sold, sold as an undeveloped, like undeveloped.
Seems just an end around, around the whole thing. I just, I just preserved it, I sold it off and there you go, there's a wall mark there.
Oh, no, no, it's forever preserved. Yeah, that open space is forever preserved. Yeah, there's deed restrictions on that.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems that there's too many moving parts to kind of try to, you know, stick it all in one drawer here. I mean, I think you can make suggestions, but to try to specifically regulate the usage of that land, I think you'd be herding cats. I mean, you, because you run the gambit from, from mountainous woodland that's undeveloped to, to prime agriculture.
Hmm.
So.
And it could be anything from, yeah, like hiking trail to meadow to farmed land to, to a community garden. What if this, the housing there wants to make it a community garden there? They could do, you know, like, it could be a playground, like it could be anything. And so restricting some of that stuff, I feel like.
If we keep the language suggestive, I think would be.
Yeah, wherever possible.
Or like, I think I would like to see maybe at the next meeting, we could see like a dra, like a draft based on our comments and feedback and then we can kind of decide like.
I like that.
Whether we want to pull some of this stuff that we're talking about entirely or like.
It gives us, gives us some time to stew on it.
And I'll have Tom look at it beforehand too. But um, before, so this.
Keep going down your list.
Kind of relates to what we're talking about, but um, like priority selling to farmer for open space land if it's prime farmland.
Hmm.
I will have to ask Tom. Haven't found any bylaws in other towns that state that. So I don't know if there's a possibility of.
That's a town question.
Stating that, but I, I know you said, um, just using language of like it would be preferred. Yeah, prefer that it was done this way.
If it was prime, if it was considered prime soils, that it would be.
Yeah.
Farmed in some way.
Yeah. I wish that there was a way to be more like explicit about that because.
Because I'm also thinking of a scenario too, where like, let's say there's some benevolent, is that the good word?
Benevolent is the good one.
Uh, but benevolent landowner that wants to do an open space development by law and also wants to help a fledgling startup farmer right out of UMass, right? Like, and they do this and then sell them the deed restricted land because it'll be cheap to a new farmer and help someone start a new farm.
Hmm. And also that's true. It's like, these will be smaller parcels too and more affordable for people coming out of, what is it? Stockbridge at UMass? Yeah.
Just, yeah, that would like, would be a cool concept.
Yeah. Um.
The other, related to that, that open space parcel, is there allowed to be like a house on one of those parcels? Like, let's say they want to put a, a farmhouse in the farm.
I.
Do they have to be completely?
I do not think so. Well, let me refer to uses allowed. Goodness gracious. Um, uses permitted in the open space of OSD. Um, so I think this was an addition in this section. I don't think.
Yeah, what, read, yeah.
So I'll read.
Yeah.
Um, agricultural uses including horticulture, raising of crops, livestock, poultry, nurseries, orchards, hay, buildings related to the same.
There you go. Barns. Good.
Barns.
Stables are good.
Barns.
But not like a.
Stables are good. Warehouse.
That's okay. I'm not entirely opposed to that.
Big, big chicken.
You can still have a farmhouse in the subdivision.
That's A. Public park or recreation area, woodlots, arboretum and other similar um, silvicultural uses. Woodland preserve, game preserve, wildlife sanctuary or other similar conservation use. Accessory uses customarily incidental to any permitted use such as gazebos, cadenas, pedestrian walks or bicycle paths, et cetera. So I don't.
This is not completely restrictive on what you can do.
We could add a, Tom question, we could add a section that says, um, like if designated prime farmland and will be sold to a farmer, like could be used for.
I don't know. Is that?
That might be going against like.
An open land?
Yeah.
Kind of what?
Can a residence be on open space?
I don't.
That's good, yeah. You're right. Don't do that. Well, it's going to just complicate it.
What's I get is, you know, it is encouraged that prime agricultural land remains agricultural, right? So.
Remains farm.
That, just that little thing.
Or like actively farmed, something like that.
Yeah, that thing could be enough hook to hang a projection of a plan on, you know? It doesn't have to be a prescriptive law. So it is encouraged that farmland will remain actively farmed. So somebody's, you know, I'm perfectly within my rights to sell it to this person has other than farming intentions for the preserved land.
Yeah.
And they just have that little line in there saying, it is encouraged that, or it is preferred that. And then they can be used, if you have, you know, two people to pick from. You have somebody who's going to farm, right?
Right.
Their intention is to farm and somebody who's not, you can.
Yeah, because then I'm like looking at section D or whatever, it says gazebo and things like that, like.
Yeah, you're good to make a sidewalk, you're good to make it.
Right, I'm thinking if that's what they, I can see now why they wanted to have the public access to that written in because then it's just going to be like, it could potentially just be a gazebo with a giant grass field that then only the community that lives there has access to. So I understand the intent behind having the open space be more than just a private open space.
Private yard, yeah.
Yeah, but the alternative of having just larger McMansions fill up an area. So.
True. All right.
Um, cool. Well.
Any other questions?
Those are all my questions.
Wow, we got through them all.
For now, yeah.
For now.
You got a lot of red on that document.
Right, well, a lot of it's formatting stuff that was changed, but um.
So between now and then, like ideally we'd have, how much time do you all need ahead of our meeting to review a draft from Janelle?
I would need a week.
A week.
A week is good. Then I can get to it on the weekend.
Cool. I will aim, I mean, I'm working tomorrow, so I'm going to.
Yeah, by the, by October 25th, it would be great for us.
October 25th, okay.
To have it.
Something spooky.
Hopefully not spooky, fun.
I'll put it in orange and black font. Each line will alternate in color. It'd be really fun to read.
Because then, once we have something to actually like pick apart and pick through, I think it'll be. And it's helpful to have the old one for us to, to take a look at and see how much it's going to change. Hopefully it's less pages than the current one, but it remains to be seen.
Okay.
I'm only saying this because I want things to be simpler for people.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, there's also questions when we go through the open space development, one that you have, it might be like we're saying, binding with some of your questions, maybe too prescriptive in some instances, so we'll see.
Okay. Well, thank you for answering my questions. I will go to Tom next and ask him about those things. Is there anything that?
The only other thing, I guess, I guess the big question that I have is, the first question that we tackled is the, if we can make this de facto or not, and then not like we would need to also look at our subdivision bylaws. So depending on his answer on that, we might, that might be a next month agenda item for us to look at some of that and like what other communities have done and or any recommendations that you think we should look at with updating them potentially? If that's the route that we would like to go down.
You'll ask it with the flavor of, it is our preference to move this to de facto? Tell us why we can't.
Okay.
So he doesn't, he does his research in that direction.
Yeah. Okay. Cool.
And then we would already knock off two items on our comprehensive plan committee recommendation.
Yay.
How many more you got? How many more?
I know. These, these are things that are, would be endorsed in a comprehensive planning committee anyway, so. That we would be unveiling to the public.
Talk about a replacement for Michael?
Yeah, so that's our next item on the agenda. Are we all, y'all set? Janelle with those two things?
Yep.
Great. Um, appointment discussion on the vacant board seat. Thank you, Jimmy, for moving us along. All right. Um, so what happens? There's kind of two options here, is my understanding. Ashton, are you aware of, you can back me up on this?
Included, this is her one.
Great, he included the Massachusetts general laws that include this. So if a vacancy occurs, we have, we can decide within a one month of the said vacancy to fill the vacancy.
It says shall, which means you must.
All right, so we will send a notice to the selectmen within one month of the vacancy.
That says we would like to, yeah, either.
So I guess we have to decide whether or not we want to fill the vacancy or not. My, and if we're having discussion on that, my thought is that we should.
Gives you that option.
That we should probably fill that vacancy due to the fact that we have, um, you know, if we need a super quorum, we're going to need the, we're going to need the people, we're going to need the.
Right, because the other option is we don't and we just wait till the next election, right?
That's, and that's what, April?
May.
May?
I don't think we have the luxury of doing that.
No, I don't, I think you're right, Jimmy.
Law that.
So if I, if I may, if I may, I make a motion.
Person or the selector to do it.
If I may, I make a motion that we. If I may, I make a motion that we, that we, as a board, decide to fill the vacant position.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes that we are going to move along with the process to fill the vacancy. So Jen, this is a call out to the public. There will be a notice saying that there's a vacancy on the planning board, you write a little, you submit your intent to serve. I believe it'll be to town administrator, but look for the announcement on that. And then that'll be, we discuss as a board on the applicants, who we would like, an executive session, probably, no.
Let's see, the selectmen, provide a town clerk with a notice of the vacancy to be filled. Notice will be posted for a minimum of one week. Selectmen and remaining members of the elected board hold a joint meeting to fill such vacancy by roll call vote.
That's what I heard, yeah.
Notice of appointment is provided to the town clerk and the employee reports to the town clerk to be sworn in and receive required paperwork.
Yep, so it'll basically, people, anyone interested in serving, they would serve now until the main town meeting and then they would have to run again. To fill that seat.
Well, if they still wanted it.
If they still would like it. Yeah, we're happy, we're good people here. That's a great opportunity to learn and have an impact in your local community. So we, and we'll encourage folks to apply that. So that may or may not be something we vote out at our next meeting. Because we will need someone from the select board to be at this meeting. Or us to go to a select board meeting.
Then we'll need candidates.
Then we'll need candidates, so hopefully more than one. Okay.
Okay, cool.
Done. My item four, the comprehensive planning committee update, I just did basically, just taking this, just taking the time to say that. It looks like stuff that is coming as a recommendation from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. After we've, they've done chapter hearings, they've listened to the community, based on feedback from town survey, they're making these recommendations on what we should be doing with land use, with housing, et cetera. And the land use suggestions, many of, a couple of the ones we're already working on or thinking about, which is like updating the subdivision bylaws. The opens, updating the open space development by law, making it, you know, by right, hold on. Sorry, one second. I'm meant to pull this out earlier.
What stuff you got in there?
Too many things.
That's a briefcase right there.
Too many things, okay. Right now, some, one of their recommended actions is to perform a zoning diagnostic to examine the readability and content of our zoning bylaws. What is that? Divide, define and revise the zoning bylaws as necessary with a new format, modern terminology, and definitions that fully describe items discussed within the bylaw. As we know, our bylaws are kind of clunky, some of it outdated. So it's basically, the action is to do that, and who does, who does that, Janelle? No. Basically, the action I put in here helped justify grant, like applying for grants. So we would then probably like apply for a grant to like have Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and like our assistant town planner work together to recommend completely updating all of our. Yes, Jimmy? Can you say that again, Jimmy? We'll pipe in if you need to. So that was like one of the recommendations, which we all know that that's probably needed. Review how the design guidelines are currently administered. Design guidelines, check, because we don't administer them at all. That's what they're asking.
There you go.
Because they said some communities have them and then they never reference any projects to them. And so one of the recommendations is seeing if you're using them. Well, we're going to be starting using them, so that's good. Review and revise subdivision rules to promote open space development by law, basically.
Okay.
Examine certain zoning overlay districts. Consider allowing open space residential development by right. But it says allowed by right, so I'll have to let them know that. Yeah. Other things are saying, and how, enhance, allow for the appropriate use, development, and redevelopment of land in, in town center to facilitate a true New England town center. Improve, create, and/or create pedestrian networks in around town center. Revise standards around town center. And this doesn't mean just town center, but like, there could be other town centers in town, if that makes sense? Like making a town center on five and 10, or in North Hatfield, or, you know, examples. Review and revise building size criteria based upon standards to keep consistency of appearance in neighborhoods. Discuss reuse and infill development. Adopt zoning to promote reuse of existing underutilized buildings with commercially zoned properties to encourage walkable layouts of development. So, those are just some things that they are recommending and talking about us doing and tackling in the future.
Just out of curiosity, what is like the rate of which you, well, I know most of you are new to the board as well, but rate of like businesses applying for permits here? It's been, since I've joined, it's been kind of quiet.
I mean, it depends on businesses that come to us versus businesses that.
Or like, I guess not even make it that far.
Well, a lot, a lot of times if, the way that it works is if like they're buying, or if someone is already operating a business and they sell it and it's some, a similar business, they don't have to come to us. Like, they just can use the same permit or they're already grandfathered pre-existing non-conforming use anyway, and so they don't have to come to us.
Okay.
So that, that happens all the time, I think, and we don't, we would have no visibility into that. That's something that the building inspector probably.
That sounds like kind of what happened with the car repair place, English, who are moving over to our, on our side of the line.
Right, like that would be an example.
They're buying, they're buying an existing business that's similar to theirs.
But it wasn't similar to theirs, which is why they came to us. But there's a lot of businesses that don't come to us at all, Jimmy, because they're just similar businesses.
Right.
Yeah. So I don't know, Janelle.
Okay.
But they're really, it comes in fits and starts. I think there'll be a lot of business, potentially a lot of business development, once the sewer line gets finished on five and 10. I know that a lot of projects are waiting for that to go in before they come to us. Like the hotel, that was a big thing. Even the storage unit, that's a big thing, that's going to bring in tax revenue for the town, too. And those have just been since you've been here.
Cool.
But those are, I just wanted to share that, if you, anyone, you all or anyone else is interested in attending, all of our comprehensive planning committee meetings are open to the public. So if you feel jazzed to learn more, based on what I just said, you can come to, learn when our chapter meetings are and come to them. Right now, there are two meeting in the basement right now, and one on housing and one on infrastructure, critical facilities, and social resilience. So it's a lot of things, it's a lot of things.
Social resilience.
Yes. All right. Any other updates from our assistant planner, Janelle Franklin? Apologies, I didn't introduce you today to this meeting, I was.
That is okay.
And same with you, Ashton.
I do not have any updates. Quite a lot of interest from people on the lots that are for sale on Pantry Road right now, which have not been divided, but they're being advertised as being divided and not really, anything can go on them. I don't know if any, have you seen these on Zillow? There's like a huge 33 acre lot on Pantry Road, and right now, two of them are being sold for like one acre.
Do they have the frontage requirement?
No. And.
So what could be done?
One of them does, one of them doesn't, and they, it's a lot of wetland area back there, too. So it's a lot of telling people that they can't do what they want.
That's probably why they've been on the market for a year.
Yeah.
Okay.
And yeah.
Well, at least people are knowing how to get to you and talking to you, so that's good.
Yep.
Time to approve some minutes.
Can I just ask quickly, what were the, what were the numbers on those lots?
The numbers?
They currently are not numbers, because it's like a big lot.
Where are they, the uphill side or downhill side?
Is it, do you remember if they have the 91 side or?
Side or mountain side?
I'm going to bring it up, because I'm going to say it wrong if I just.
It's on Zillow.
I can figure it out.
Give me one sec.
I don't want us to say the wrong thing.
I think it's lot 50, it's on the accessories map, that's 53.
Okay, I'll look it up, Janelle, that's fine, thank you.
All right, let's take a look at our minutes from our September 6th meeting.
I actually did look at those, I didn't see anything.
Yep. And any comments? If not, can I get a motion?
Making a motion that we approve September's minutes as presented.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, minutes approved. Ashton's first minutes approved.
Nice job, Ashton.
All right, our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, November 1st. Don't spend too late out in Halloween, you know?
First of November.
Make sure you don't have that candy hangover the next day.
All saints do.
All right. And yeah, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned at 7:02. Bye, Jimmy, thank you.
Bye, Jimmy, have fun.